Hi, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Bryan County Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment. We will now call the meeting to order, and our first item will be an approval of the October seventeen meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections? Okay, well, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And I will need a motion to open the board of adjustment.
Make a motion to open the board.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, first item, variance project two zero two two zero two three nine, Evan Hall with Marchese Construction LLC.
Good evening. The first one is a variance request, Evan Hall representing the Mount Sinai Missionary Baptist Church, to reduce the front setback from sixty to thirty-five feet. You may remember this one from presented from last month, and they have came back and presented a new concept to work with staff. So now they are only requesting a forty-five-foot setback reduction, and they have provided information on the pervious paving issue. So we know that they'll be under that as well, and they're only looking to do the addition to the building, so it's not quite as large. So we've came up with a few recommendations that the applicant indicated that they would work with staff on and be agreeable to, and they are to reduce the front setback to forty-five feet. The variance shall only apply to the building addition as presented. The applicant must submit the new revised construction plans for the building dimensions and then the grading information. If you saw on your packets, it's this like true grid network that will require some details for how they do the subgrade for that system. And then we also are wanting the condition of the applicant to submit a surveyed site plan to show the precise right-of-way dimensioning needed for the future widening of Hare's Trail that we know is coming. Y'all have any questions? I know that was a lot of information in a short amount of time. All right, thank you.
Is the applicant here?
I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, yes, sir, if you'll state your name into the mic for the record.
David Algar.
Okay.
Standing in for Evan Hall, please sit.
All right. Did you have anything to add to this?
No, uh-uh, I took all the recommendations and tried to do everything that was requested.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Algar? And you are my only speaker, slip, but did anyone else want to speak for or against? Do you want to add anything? Okay. All right, guys, I'll take a motion, one way or the other, on item number one. Okay, excellent. Thank you, guys, for working with us on that.
Yeah, thanks, man.
Thank you, good luck.
Item number two, variance project two zero two three zero eight one five, Scott Allison with Coleman Company on behalf of Robert Ward Jr. To have a motion to open public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so this is another variance request for Fancy Hall Lot Ten, project twenty twenty-three zero one eight one eight one five. Scott Allison is representing Mr. Robert Ward to reduce both the left and right setbacks from thirty-five to fifteen feet. This is also located on the south end of the county at Fantasy Hall subdivision, which is at the very end of Highway one forty-four. And it is currently zoned RR one, rural residential. The applicant is looking to reduce the setbacks in order to increase the building envelope to build a single-family home. Currently, there's a guest house on the lot that's going to be demolished, you know, in order to build the new house. Staff found that it did meet the variance criteria. The lot is under the one-acre minimum required for the RR one zoning, excuse me, and it also is not the hundred-and-fifty-feet lot width that we would normally require. And we just feel it's the intent of the ordinance to keep the neighborhood kind of looking cohesive throughout. So for those reasons, we do recommend approval of the requested setback variance.
Okay, any questions for Brett?
Thank you.
Scott Allison, Coleman Company, I really don't have that much more to add. Brett did a good job of summarizing the request and meeting the Unified Development Ordinance criteria. I can answer any questions you may have if you want specifics about what they're trying to do.
Y'all put that map back up there. There we go. Anybody have any questions? All right, well, then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, I will take a motion to open the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our first item is rezoning project two zero two three zero two two one. I'll take a motion to open public hearing. Do we do that already?
Did.
Okay, all right.
Already? Yeah, you may remember this one's pretty familiar. It's been deferred a couple of times. This is a rezoning request. Mr. Rick Wilson is requesting to rezone approximately four-point-six-five acres from the A-five agricultural to the CI interchange commercial at four forty-five Deer Run Road. And this gives you a location of the property. It's up near the I-sixteen Highway two-eighty interchange. Gives you a better overview as well. It is currently zoned A-five, and the applicant hasn't submitted any concept plan or development plans for it. The staff hasn't received any new information from the applicant as to the neighborhood, and since it's still, you know, CI requested interchange in the middle of like a residential neighborhood, Deer Run Road being a subdivision that people live on, staff is still recommending denial of the rezoning request, and I think we would ask that the board make a decision tonight so that it can be, you know, forwarded to the commissioners that are going to make the final decision anyways.
I have a question, or actually a couple of questions. One is, are we still under the moratorium, or was this submitted prior to that?
This was submitted prior to, so y'all actually first heard this item in May, and the moratorium came into effect in July.
Okay. And secondly, has the staff made any, or do they make, do y'all make any recommendation as to how we approach this subdivision in general? I mean, because I know, you know, I know there's been some talk of neighborhoods or neighbors banding together and coming potentially at some point, or that may, could or could not happen at some point.
Right.
But is, is there, has there been any discussion of that, or, you know, is there a strategy, I guess is what I'm asking?
I think that's how we would prefer to see, if everyone would come at the same time with one development plan.
... is for them to come together and work together, and they need to be looking for a representation that represents the whole community. Staff can't do that for them, and we certainly can't coordinate that for them. So as of right now, that's where it stands with us. What we would like to do is, before moving forward with any type of commercial rezoning, that they be united in what they're requesting and what they're representing. And we've, you know, heard from, you know, several different members of the community this throughout the course of a year and a half now, which is whenever I think we first started talking to them. And, you know, we still don't know that everybody within that community is on board with the rezoning for a commercial, but certainly that is what we would like to see before we would make any, you know, recommendations to support that type of request. And we see it as needing to be an all or nothing, because as a residential neighborhood on one residential street, there are going to be a lot of impact to anybody who wants to stay residential if others go to commercial.
What were their biggest concerns when they came to these, the group meetings? When they came to these meetings, what were their biggest concerns to have a rezoning to C one?
I don't, I don't know that they expressed their concerns at those meetings. I think a lot of it is just getting the information out there of this is why you need to be working together. And I just don't know that everybody in that community is ready to sign up for a rezoning application. I mean, we certainly haven't seen it, because this is the only rezoning application that we've received in a year and a half that we've been talking about it.
What, what has Deer Run shown on the current comprehensive plan?
So on the new comprehensive plan that was just adopted in October, we do represent it as mixed use. So we recognize that there was discussions with some interest from the Deer Run subdivision, and so we did incorporate that into the future land use map. So there, there is that opportunity, I think, for them to come together and work together. It's just a decision that that community as a whole is going to make.
And one other question, sorry, but I just want to make sure I have all the facts. But if we, if this motion was denied, or if this action was denied here, I mean, I know it goes on to county commissioners, but say they denied it as well, and then within a year, the community came back, and as a whole, I mean, I know you, we have a year, and once, once something is denied before they can come back and reapply. So does that, does that kick everybody in the community out of reapplying for a year?
No, it only kicks the one application that's denied out. But that certainly presents some other challenges that if every other property is moving forward on a zoning application, and you have one that hates because of the timing limitations. And so really, I think that's where, you know, staff is, you know, we have said, I think, from the beginning, we think this application is premature. It could be withdrawn and not have that impact of not being able to come back if the rest of the community decides to file. But certainly, if it moves forward to the board commissioners and if it is denied, then they are.
Thinking of us.
No, I think some of.
Thinking of us.
No, I think some other residents are eager to.
I have a question, or something I'd like to say. Back in September.
If you get your name and address in for the record.
Actually, just to follow the rules, I think we need to be hearing from the applicant before we open it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Zachary Jackson, four-four-five Deer Run Road, are you my applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome.
All right. All right. My name is Zachary Jackson. I'm speaking on behalf of Rick Wilson. He's currently in a doctor's care. My wife's also there at the hospital with him, and he's come down with cancer, so he's dealing with that. Last time I was here, y'all asked me why I thought they were taking my property. It's because eminent domain lawyers have sent me this paperwork showing me that they're going to put, well, that it's a suggested plan, that they're going to put a roundabout on the back of my property. So I don't care to build anything where I live. I don't really want to move. I'm being forced out. You all know what Hyundai is doing over there. I'm on a shallow well, I may lose water on that, that's another issue. I just want money if they kick us out, if they take our stuff.
Let me ask you what you guys.
So this is my, this is my stuff from the Georgia eminent domain law firm. They don't just send that stuff out for no reason.
No, they send it out so you'll pay them.
Well, I ain't paying them anything, but.
Well, this is a promotional item.
It is, but it also had a, it also had a page with my parcel on it talking about what's going on with the roundabout on the back of my property. And also I had realtors stopping by my house wanting to buy my house. Like I said last month, it's not a neighborhood. We live on a street where people own property that live in houses. It's called Deer Run Road. It's not Deer Run subdivision. Nobody wanted to move over there. Nobody wanted the stuff or move from over there. Nobody wanted all this stuff coming on top of us, but it's happened. So now all we want to do is have something fair given to us if we're being forced out. If you can promise me that we're not being forced out and nobody's taking any of my property, then I'm good. Because I don't want to pay the extra commercial tax. And I know Rick's the one I'm speaking on behalf of, but he's not doing well. My wife's got power of attorney over him, so I'm having to be here for tonight.
Okay. So you don't want the property to go commercial?
No, I want the property to go commercial because they're going to end up taking my stuff.
Who is coming to get your stuff?
I'm sure eminent domain's going to get my property. I'm sure it's going to happen, whether it be the county or the state or whoever.
Okay.
I don't know. I got Hyundai coming in right there. It's a lot of different variables, man. It's not where we moved to to start with.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Jackson?
I'm the, I'm the new one on the street. I've been there twelve years.
Mr. Wilson receive anything from G dot or even just...
I'm not sure. It's, it's hard to...
Certified letter, I mean promotional versus certified letter is a very different thing in the eyes of the law.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not denying that they're not going to. I just need to know by chance if they've already enacted something right now, if they already affected...
I haven't heard if they did. I don't know. Like I say, Rick's in bad, bad shape right this second.
And I'll ask the same question because if, because with respect to the, to the one property, the adjacent O one five ten and O one five oh eight should also have similar letters coming to them as well for eminent domain. So I'm going to, when we, when we ask the, just the same as we ask you.
Mr. Jackson, if I, if I can just add this, my profession is I'm a real estate appraiser. And I'm currently working on a project for DOT that is a roundabout project. Is actually a series of roundabouts, all on two eighty. They are actively buying property along two eighty, as is Georgia Power, to put in power. And Georgia DOT is buying property along there for right-of-way to build these roundabouts. One is coming right there Interstate Center Boulevard. But I can tell you from all the plans I've seen or anything that I'm personally working with, there's nothing that would go back as far as your property. The right-of-way or, or Mr. Wilson's property.
Yes, sir.
The right-of-way that they're buying is all off of the properties that front or touch Highway two eighty in some manner.
Yes.
So that would be the Loves, that would be Michael Jackson's property that's on the corner there. That would be the property that joins Michael Jackson's property and then also properties on the other side of the highway. So I'm not saying that there's not another project that I'm not aware of. I'm not saying that the county or the state won't eventually take something from your property. But I can tell you from the, from the project that I know of that's active in that area right now, there's nothing that would involve anything on Interstate Center Boulevard beyond the Loves or Michael Jackson's property on the corner. So, so anyway, I don't, I don't know if that helps at all, but that is from...
I appreciate the info though.
And, and I will add to that, even though the state or the county or, or other authorities do have the right of eminent domain, they can, the state, the county, no one can take property from anyone without paying market value.
That's the difference in residential and commercial.
Right.
At the rezoning point, not that we want to build anything, not that we want to do anything. Just if they're planning on taking it, I want to get paid more.
Right. No, I, I totally understand that. And, and again, as an appraiser working on that project, that's something that we have discussed. There's still resident, if eminent domain is involved at some point, at this point, and I don't work on every project that DOT works on. I'm a contract appraiser. But I will tell you, I don't know of anything that would impact your property at this point in time.
Oh, thank you. There you go.
I guess my only question for the applicant is are, are you aware, based on what Amanda said, that if your application is denied and then the rest of your, the residents where you live move on and then apply and they all...
They're going to get it and I'm going to be, and I'm going to be isolated, just like our whole community neighborhood y'all want to call it, is already being done.
Right. Well, I guess what I'm asking is do you understand the impact of that?
Yeah, I understand that you're saying I need to withdraw, so if somebody...
No, I'm not saying...
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
I'm not telling you you should withdraw. I'm saying if you...
You're suggesting that I should withdraw, that way I could be, which is, which is probably not...
I'm not suggesting and I'm not telling you and I'm not advising you. I'm saying, do you understand the impact of that? Okay.
Oh, yes.
I just want to make sure.
Oh, yes. I'm, I'm very aware of that.
All right.
Any more questions? All right, well, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have any other speaker slips, so we'll just come up one at a time and... For us or for the applicant? Oh, okay, great, all right.
Okay. My name's Christy Hall. I live on Deer Run Road. And it's my understanding, I spoke with you back around the end of September with Harrison, I did. And you told us that as of October first or somewhere within that vicinity, we would be mixed use. Is that correct?
That's right. I was referring to the, the comprehensive plan that they...
Right. So am I correct in saying that if I put my property up for sale, I can list it as mixed use? Is that correct?
Um, we can't tell you how to list your property.
I'm, I'm not asking you to tell me how to list it.
The future land use map is just that, is a, a future planning and guiding document. Rezoning still has to happen and the burden of a rezoning application still has to be presented and evidenced through the boards and be approved. So I think to say that a property is approved for mixed use just based off of the future land use map could be a little misleading because a rezoning process still has to take place for those type of uses to, to be viable there.
Okay, so my question was, if I contact a realtor and he lists my property, is he not able to list it as mixed use?
You would have to go through the process first of presenting your, of presenting your application to the board for that particular...
So you have a comprehensive map.
So the comprehensive plan is a guiding document.
Okay.
It's not a regulatory document as such. Zoning is regulatory. Zoning says you can do this or you can't do that or whatever. When we, when we entertain a motion or a action to change zoning, we look at the comprehensive plan as a guiding document. So if you're wanting to rezone to commercial, but the comprehensive plan says residential, then we have to then have two actions. One is to change the comprehensive plan and the other is to change the zoning. With the new comprehensive plan, because you're showing mixed use, as long as you come forward with a zoning action that kind of matches that mixed use intent, then we don't have to entertain a motion to change the comprehensive plan. It's already been changed. But the comprehensive plan does not change your zoning. So that's what Amanda was saying. You would have to come forward and change your zoning. So could you advertise it as mixed use? We can't tell you how to advertise your property.
I understand.
But that could be slightly misleading because whoever buys your property...
Is going to have to have it rezoned.
Right. And if you come as a singular property, you're going to have to...
Automatically grandfather everybody's land for change. There's no, there's no blanket zoning in that part. There's no rezoning. You'd have to apply individually.
I, I'm just going to speak for myself. So for me, my dilemma is you're obviously surrounded by everything that's commercial and industrial. I mean, that's, we know that, you know. But you're also surrounded by other people who live there. And it's very difficult for me to say, okay, well, your one property, or in this case, this one property can be commercial. When you have people that live all around this one property, that that's their home. And so, but, but yet at the same time, it's hard, hard me to say, well, your property can't go commercial because obviously that's kind of the trend and what's around there. What would make, what would make it much easier for, for, I'm speaking for myself. For me, is if the whole neighborhood came together and said, we all want this, we want the whole neighborhood zoned commercial.
Right.
And, and if that was possible, then it would be a much easier decision. Because then you're not, then by us saying, you know, approving a commercial use, which ultimately the commission...
Because we felt like if you say mixed, you're saying commercial, light, industrial, and residential. If you put your property on the market and somebody comes in and buys it, we don't know what they're going to do with it. They may want to live there. They may, may want to build a warehouse there. They may want to build an apartment complex.
Right.
We don't know that. We don't have any idea.
And, and, and they may be able to do some of those uses if they come and get, but they're, they're going to have to do the same thing that Mr. Wilson is trying to do with his property, which is come before the board and get it rezoned. But they don't have to change the comprehensive plan because now the new plan shows it as mixed use, so...
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Just give me your name and address in the mic for the record.
My name is Joanne Fortner. My husband Leon's sitting out there right next to him. We moved up here in eighty-five. Sold our house in Savannah. Made out our home all these years, built our home and everything. Got all kinds of buildings on our property. And I don't think I have to move if I don't want to move. And I have to sell if I don't want to sell.
I, I mean, absolutely not.
No, I don't have to.
No. Is that some want it and some don't?
Oh, no. She's here, lives down the road, but she come because I moved up here and she come up and she's down there too.
Right.
She don't want to move.
Yeah.
We're in our eighties and it's going to be hard for us to move.
Right.
Y'all gonna let us move in with y'all?
You don't want to live in my house. I have little kids.
Well, the thing is...
And when I moved up there, it's residential on my deed, residential. Five acre plots, residential.
Nothing stays the same wherever.
On my deed. They don't say nothing about commercial or nothing else.
We sat for twenty minutes at the end of Deer Run Road trying to get on Highway two eighty the other morning.
I believe that.
Twenty minutes. Nobody told me I had to leave twenty minutes early to go to a doctor's appointment that don't take some thirty minutes to get there. I mean, it's ridiculous. We get held, I live...
I would like to say I almost got killed again Wednesday morning, or afternoon, sorry. Going to pick up my grandkids from school once again and it happens. And I'm not lying. It's almost every single day. I was coming out of Deer Run. I got to the light, the green light. And I always slow down because it happens every day. So I was aware, I was riding the brake out from the industrial park on the right. Comes this eighteen wheeler with two big old John Deere tractors in the back. Then stopped, pulled right out in front of me. And I slammed on those brakes. My son that was sitting next to me that has Down syndrome, he never moves for nothing, went to going like this because he was so terrified. And I came within probably three feet of hitting him. And as I just got stopped, he, he never stopped. And he was going so slow because his truck weighed so much. You know, continued to pull out and I was sitting there just, once again, saw my life before my eyes. And he continued and I just started laying on the horn. He kept laying on the horn because I was mad because I almost died again. And he actually pulled off and that turn ran into Loves. He pulled off there, threw his hand out the window like, sorry, and let me go by. And well, counted my blessings again because it, it's just ridiculous that he had a red light. But he just, they just go out because they see the deal sign and I think they just think...
Down there all the time.
Y'all need to be down there all, every day.
Well, my granddaughter lives next, they live on the same property, Aldenon. She rides the school bus. You all know how long school's been in this session. Her bus has been late to school every day, every day. They've tried every different route trying to get there. They pick her up before daylight. They drop her off at five twenty in the afternoon. She's, she's ten years old.
Can I take my grandkids?
Well, I try to pick her up when I can.
Yeah, because they're six and seven. Chairman, you may. There's going to be continued comments to have them approach the survey.
Oh, okay.
You tired, listen to us? Is that what you're saying?
No, I said, pump the tone up so we can get it in my microphone.
Yeah, so we can record it.
We're not tired. We just want to make sure that we can get your comments for the record.
Yep.
That's all. We're not tired.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else have any questions first?
Y'all going to take the light down and put a roundabout up there, right? The light's coming down, it's up there.
We don't, we don't do that.
We don't, we don't do that.
No, ma'am.
That's G dot. That's not us.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for staff or a member of the community or each other or the applicant or anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Motion. All right, motion. In a second.
Can any of y'all tell me?
Let me get your name and address in the mic please.
I'm Robin Phillips, one six four Deer Run Road, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
Can any of y'all tell me what Deer Run Road property, five acre plots, are classified as?
I'd have to look at your individual tax card, but this one is RR one, so I would imagine they're RR one.
What's that mean?
Rural residential one.
Thank you.
All right, I had a motion and a second to close the public hearing that I didn't get a vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Take a motion of action on this item? I make the motion for denial. All right, have a motion to deny? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is denied. Okay, other business. Got an item here for discussion scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
All right. So just housekeeping items and nothing for this evening, but just want to make you aware of some actions that we will be looking to take at next month's meeting. Being that we'll be at the end of the year in December, we usually have our items where we adopt our twenty twenty-four schedule. So we will be doing that next month. We also will be taking a look at our bylaws. We like to look at those annually to see if there are any adjustments that are needed. So we'll send those out to you ahead of time. And if we need to make any changes, we can discuss it at the meeting in December. And then also, we do need to be prepared to make nominations for our chair and vice chair for twenty twenty-four. So we'll be doing that in December also, if you want to start thinking about those nominations. Other than that, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Can we nominate names?
I think Scott says he's going to be throwing us a Christmas party. He's coming here and not, he's going to join the curve. He's a troublemaker.
Do what? Ma'am?
You have my vote.
For what?
You just got nominated.
Oh.
Yeah, because I'm just the left field guy.
He's, he's new. He needs a, he needs...